They said it's going to be the biggest storm in five years.
Is that right?
Really? Oh, I didn't hear that. Oh, my.
Really? Oh, I didn't know that.
All right, because we do have a quorum and it is six oh two. I am going to call the special meeting for the Groton Regular Board of Education to order, and it is it is six oh two, and we do have a quorum. Dr. Grenier, I am praying since this will be your last regular board meeting. If you would be willing to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Sure, I'd be happy to.
Oh.
I pledge allegiance.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
And to the republic.
For the with the stand.
Stand. One nation.
One nation.
Under. With liberty and justice for all.
And justice for all.
Kim?
Yes, sir.
Uh, right after this image, I have the national anthem that the middle school did.
Oh, wow. That would be very cool.
Okay. That was shared by Lisa Gray's Orchestra at Groton Middle School.
Wow.
That's great. That was amazing. I think I saw Jamal. Is Peter also on this Zoom?
Not seen Peter. Jamal is here.
Okay, just Jamal. Kudos to the Groton Middle School. Thank you very much. That is great. Doctor, Doctor Grenier.
Yes.
Do we have any recognition or participation of visitors and delegates?
No, I don't think so.
Okay, I'm going to move us on to the comments from citizens. This is the portion of the agenda where the board welcomes comments from citizens. Each presentation should be limited to five minutes or less, and citizens should, if possible, submit written comments. Presentation should be related to matters pertinent to Groton. Board members will only ask questions in order to clarify the speaker's presentation and cannot respond during the comments. The citizen portions of the board meeting. Citizens should and state their names and addresses for the record. Ms. Joan? Do you know if there is anyone that has contacted you that they were interested in?
No, no one has contacted me.
Okay. For those people who have more skill looking at the screen and talking at the same time. That would not be me. Do we know of anyone that has any, um, any? If there is a citizen who would like to make a comment to the board, if you can somehow notify me either through chat or raising your hand, that would be very delightful. All right, hearing none. I'm going to move us on to student representative report. Do we get anything in writing? Do we have our student reps here?
You know, I don't think we, just let me check. I'm sorry, I don't think we do.
All right, so then, Dr. Grenier, you're on.
Well, I, since this is my, uh, my, my last board meeting, I thought I'd ma- ma- make a few comments, and let me start by saying my, my wife mentioned this, this would be a, this would be a good time to, to, to look back. It's, as, uh, as Jay, uh, white wife knows, this is, uh, seven years to the day. I, I will leave. I started on the first of January, uh, two thousand fourteen, and so I am finishing up, uh, se- seven years, and, and, and she encouraged me to, to look back on all the district's accomplishments and, but she also observed, a- as my wife often does, that I didn't get here alone. She was suggesting that I received some, uh, s- some, uh, support from the home, which God, God knows is true. But I, I, I did, I did want to observe that there were lots of people, and I feel so incredibly proud to be part of, of this district. But as I, as I look back, just, just quickly, uh, uh, of course, I see a legacy of the two thousand twenty, uh, Groton Plan that, that so many people made possible. We, we are in the process of building. One already is completed and two, uh, new, uh, elementary schools, one combined, uh, middle school. We have created an international backglow at campus, uh, between the high school and the middle school. We are in the process of closing four older and more costly facilities. And, and the other thing that the board recently made possible is that, uh, starting in the fall, we will be a, a one hundred percent elementary magnet district. All of that was, was really accomplished, uh, in this remarkably magical time. I, 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 I came here, I, I, I know, at, at a very pivotal time. I was very lucky to, to come to Groton at that time. I think the community was ready for a partnership, uh, obviously. We proposed the, the largest referendum in Connecticut state history. I was praying that we would only lose by five percent because of earlier one that lost by seventy-five percent, and wouldn't you know, uh, it, it, it passed. And, and so, wh- when I think back, and I, I, I think that my journey really began with a small group of people, uh, and I have a, I have a poster in my office that, that, that reflects that. It's, it's a quote from Margaret Mead, the, the, the great twentieth century, uh, anthropologist. And, and she said that never doubt that a small group of, of thoughtful, committed citizens can change the world, and indeed, it's the only thing that ever has. My, my journey began with the, with the School Facilities Initiative Task Force. Andrea smiling because she was there every month, and, uh, and Susan, uh, joined us a- a- after a while, and I'm leaving anyone out. I apologize, but we, we worked and worked and worked, and we finally got a, a, a basic understanding, and then we all got together. The second group was, uh, uh, what we called our stakeholder group in the, in the spring of two thousand fourteen. And we, we put together a plan that, uh, that settled the issue whether it was going to be one or two middle schools, and we, we settled on the, the notion of, of an international backglow at campus. And so we had our whole plan put together. We, we knew that by having magnet elementary schools, we'd be able to do away with, uh, redistricting and yet, uh, i- i- have racial balance. And so, a, a month later, li- like this is a bad novel. Uh, I, I, I got a, I got a letter from the State Board of Education saying that our schools are out of racial balance, and, and we had four months to put together a plan to address the racial balance. So I simply took, uh, actually, Kim and I, uh, went to the State Board of Ed in January of two thousand fifteen, to be exact, uh, and we said, here's this plan, uh, and it will address the racial balancing, but also it will bring a, a great, in addition to equity, i- i- it will bring excellence, and it will be more efficient for the town and so forth, and I remember a, a, a few people said to Kim and me, you know, lo- lo- lots of luck. And, and I wasn't sure if they meant that somewhat sarcastically or not, but we, we, we then went to another s- small group that Susan was instrumental in, and that was a a Groton two thousand twenty PAC, and we, we, we started to make clear to the citizens why we thought it was important, and we did focus groups, and we did signs, and we did letters, and, uh, and, and lo- lo and behold, that, now that was in, uh, in fifteen. It took us a whole year, uh, year and a half, actually. So in, in November of two thousand sixteen, there was this election, uh, the big, huge national election, and we knew there would be a hu- huge audience, and we figured that'd bring great credibility. And to our great delight and amazement, uh, it passed. A hundred eighty-four thousand dollar, uh, a hundred eighty-four million. I, I confuse my millions and thousands from time to time. Actually, a hundred eighty-four and a half million dollars, with the state paying a- 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 approximately half, uh, whi- which was a great deal, of course, for, for Groton. And so we then proceeded o- o- on our path, and so, I, I, for me, it's about partnership. The, the board has been an enormously powerful, uh, partner for me. I also want to acknowledge the town councils, not just the current one, but the former town councils, uh, the, the current, uh, and, and former RTM. I, I've had, as I, as a, as a, as a look at Beth and, uh, and, and Chris, I, I, I've been really blessed. W- we meet, I meet, and Susan also now meets, uh, mo- monthly with our association leadership, and it has led to what I consider to be a- a- absolutely a rock-solid foundation for our work. I- i- w- which is not to say is a sweetheart, uh, deal. Uh, we, we had plenty of, uh, contentious issues, but the leadership that I experienced, I feel very, very fortunate, uh, to, to have, uh, been a part of. And then, of course, I'm so, I, 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 I'm so pleased with the administration, the faculty, the staff. You know, time and time again, I hear anecdotes about what, wh- what's going on and, and, and wh- where, where things are occurring, and people going the extra mile for kids, and, and of course, I have a, a, I, I have a hidden, uh, a hidden source of information in that I have three grandchildren, uh, who, uh, were, until recently, one of them graduated, uh, students in, in Groton Public Schools, and and I must say, so many times I would go to concerts or music events, and the thing that always shocked me, and I, I'd been a school administrator, as Jamie knows, for a long time, because I was her principal or assistant principal. Uh, I've been around schools for a long time, and I have never heard kids cheer for their peers the way Fitch High School students do. It's really amazing. U- usually, I, I see, uh, quiet, uh, you know, not quiet, but, you know, clapping and so forth, but the kids, the kids in Fitch, and the kids i- in Groton generally, just have a, a genuine love and, and, and uh, real support, uh, of their, of their classmates, and it's, it's, it's really amazing. And, and then on the diversity front, many of you know I've been involved with diversity education for, uh, several decades now. And the first time I walked into Fitch, Fitch High School cafeteria, I figured I would see the white kids with the white kids, and the black kids with the black kids, and the Hispanic kids and so forth, because you almost always see that at high schools, and that was not true. I, I was, I was amazed, and that was the thing that gave me the confidence to really encourage people to have one middle school, uh, for, for Groton. Our, our kids get along. And it, it is, uh, it, it is, uh, 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 amazing to me, and a- as I say, I see it with the kids, I see it, I see it with, uh, uh, with, with my, my grandchildren, and, and as, one of the things, one of the best things I, I, I think I've done, and I expect Susan will agree, is, uh, two hours e- e- every Tuesday and Thursday morning, uh, we visited classrooms, and, uh, in time after time after time, I just, I chatted with kids, and I chatted with teachers, and, and and saw the kind of work that has been, been going on. And then, of course, now with this crazy pandemic, I, 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 I go to meetings, and people talk about breakout rooms and seesaw, and I didn't even know what these things were, uh, six months ago. And we, we have become very accomplished at, 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 at that. And, and so, for me, for my seven years here, and I'm actually wrapping up, I guess, thirty, thirty-seven years in, in, in southeastern Connecticut. I, I came here as an English teacher, once upon a time, when I taught at the Coast Guard Academy, and, uh, thoroughly enjoyed my time there, and then I joined Jamie and her, her mother and her father being my mentor, who was the principal of, uh, N- New London High School. And, and then I went up to northeastern Connecticut to Chris's neck of the woods and served, uh, uh, there, and first, uh, uh, at Torrelot Memorial High, and then as a, a rookie superintendent in, in, in Putnam, and then back to, to, to Ledgerd for, for eleven years, which was a, a really a terrific run that I enjoyed a great deal, and, and, uh, and then here for, for seven years, which I, I never, I, I, I certainly didn't think I was going to stay for, for, for seven years. So, for me, it, it's been, uh, just really an, an honor, and and I just keep thinking about pride. I, I'm just so proud of this district. I'm proud of the, what we have accomplished, and I will remain in Groton and be the cheerleader, uh, on, on the sidelines e- e- every step of the way, so thanks for, uh, giving me my moment to chat with you. That's it for me.
I am so very thankful that, you know, you didn't talk about the part about the fact that you were going to buy yourself some shin guards because, um, we would have in-person meetings. I was known to kind of give a swift kick. But, um, so I'm, I'm happy to hear that you say that, and yes, what an incredible ride the seven years have been. I have been doing some thinking about that as well, and it is wow.
Yeah.
Um, it is wow. So I always never wanted you to go on your vacations because we, it was always due for something major to have happened.
Yeah, right. That's true. Susan knows that. I would go to Florida, and we'd send the W twos to Africa.
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, sorry, I didn't mention that.
Yep, right? So, um, Mike, thank you very much, and, uh, I think that that was a, a nice, concise, but, um, uh, not, uh, there is so much more stuff, um, that is in between, but thank you very much for, um, sharing that with the board and with the community at all.
Yeah, I, I do, I do want to mention one thing. I, I, I see that He- Heather Summers has, has, has signed on, and, uh, she was the one who appointed the, 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 the School Facility Initiative Task Force, and, uh, and I also want to say that th- there was a, there was a time after we passed the referendum that we were, I was des- desperately trying to get another ten million dollars, uh, through the diversity education grant, and, and Heather was, was instrumental. We, we begged Lenny Winkler to get us a meeting with the commissioner, and Heather and I went up and made our case, and gave us the ten million bucks, and so i- it's really been, it's been a magical ride for me.
I'm sure that that's exactly the words that you use, have used every single day. With that said, Susan, I'm going to move on to you as the assistant. Uh, a- actually, this is going to be your last report as an assistant superintendent um, for the Groton Board of Education, because in January, you will be the superintendent of Groton, and so here's to your last assistant superintendent report.
Yeah.
Thank you. It's bittersweet, but at least we know where to find Mike. He's going to be, he's always been my mentor and my coach, and I stand ready, but it wouldn't have been without him, you know? So I do applaud him. Um, so my report is really, where are we? And after two weeks of going remote, after the holidays, we are back hybrid, and here comes the snow. So here we are in New England. Um, so we're hoping to get another couple days of hybrid before the snow comes on Wednesday night to Thursday. And, um, we'll be sending out some official messaging, but it looks like it's going to be a whopper, and we're thinking it needs to be a snow day. Um, just don't know about the winds and how people will get on, and we kind of feel kids need to have a snow day, so. Um, so hopefully, it'll just be Thursday, and we'll be back again and, um, ready to go until, um, the Christmas holidays, which start, um, the twenty-third is the half-day remote Wednesday, and then off we go to the holidays. And Mike and I had made the decision to do a one week with some of the new information, um, one week after the holidays. We certainly think the two weeks after Thanksgiving provided us enough time to really, um, forecast and see what was happening in our own school community, so we could prepare, although there is, you know, much absenteeism, we are figuring out how to cover those classes, and, um, you know, we just are continuing as much as possible to make those contacts with kids, and you know, make progress in that way. So that's really my report.
Thank you. So, Mr. Knight?
Yes, hello.
No, sir.
So we're going to go over our object code summary, which was attachment one, uh, that you received. Uh, this is showing that we have a projected unexpended balance, uh, for the year of three hundred, uh, fifty-five. Uh, this is a little bit better than what we looked at last month. Uh, one of the things that, uh, came, uh, that we, uh, solidified this past month was that our out-of-district general education tuitions are, are down, uh, about a hundred and thirty-nine thousand from budget. Uh, this is the result of, uh, we're noticing a decrease in the number of students, uh, in, out of district. And then, it, it's a combination, I think, of, of COVID, homeschooling, and then hopefully, some of those, uh, kids coming back, uh, and staying in district. Uh, we anticipate that there might be some, uh, in the special education, um, but, uh, we're still receiving those contracts.
Ken, can I just interrupt you for just a second? For those of you who are not talking, could you please put yourself on mute so that we don't have as much of the background noise? Thank you very much. Ken, continue.
Sure. Uh, so, but at this point, where, where we have special education tuition, uh, we're holding that at budget, but, uh, we'll continue to monitor that as, uh, as we go along. Uh, so that, that's kind of what's driving that, uh, three hundred and twenty-two thousand unexpended, uh, balance at this point.
And any, are there any questions about the object code reports? Okay, was the financing facilities, were we able to kind of go through that? Um, and did you guys talk about that?
Uh, yes, when we met on, on November thirtieth, we went through, um, everything line by line, so, um, obviously, it's very fluid. Things can change, um, but, um, we did get a full report.
Thank you.
All right.
All right.
On to the health insurance report, which was, uh, the attachment two. Uh, so this report is through October, uh, of two thousand twenty. So the month of October, uh, was, uh, the claims came in at seventy-eight percent of budget. Uh, and year-to-date, uh, they're at sixty-eight percent of budget, so we're continuing to see, um, the claims coming in, uh, lower than budget significantly. Uh, we are told by our, um, our health insurance, uh, agent that, uh, we should expect these, uh, this to, to come back at some point, that, um, uh, these nonessential medical services that were proposed, postponed, or rescheduled, uh, will, will catch up with us at some point. Um, uh, but what this is, uh, having the effect of doing is it's, it's increasing our health insurance reserve because, uh, the, these claims aren't coming in as budgeted. And, uh, we anticipate the reserve, uh, to be somewhere, uh, uh, conservatively around five million at the end of the, uh, end of the year. And so that's part of the reason why, uh, Mike and Susan and I feel comfortable, um, uh, using some of that reserve next year, uh, um, to offset the health insurance, uh, expense, uh, so uh, that, kind of what we went over last, uh, last week when we talked about, uh, the budget for next year. We would anticipate we'll utilize some of the health insurance reserve, uh, uh, then.
Any comments about that?
Ken, could you mention about the, sorry, about the budget book?
Yeah, so we anticipate having a, a budget book, uh, maybe not all the pages, but at least the, um, uh, the, the pages that have the, uh, object code and the, uh, section that has the function codes, uh, have that to you sometime before the holiday, so you can have time, uh, to review it over the holiday, because I know that's what you want to do. And, uh, we can, we can jump right into it.
Merry Christmas.
After the new year.
Because my guess is that health reserve is going to have quite a bit to play in terms of understanding that though it seems that there's a lot of money there, we really need to be mindful of the fact that, um, we are really going, people who have no, who have, with all right, um, have postponed, um, doctors' appointments and surgeries and such, um, that we, we can't let that kind of go as, down as much as we think that there's a twinkle in our eyes about that.
That's right. They, they tell us that we should hold an additional reserve, more than we would typically, uh, of around a million to a million and a half to, to account for these, uh, postponed and, um, and rescheduled, um, um, appointments and services.
Any other comments for Ken? And Ken, thank you for, um, getting together that budget book as quickly as possible. I really appreciate that.
You're welcome.
Mr. Kilpatrick? Where are you? Oh, there you are. Uh, I can't hear you, though, sir.
Good evening.
Did you get it?
Oh, now I can.
So I have, uh, about four items I want to, uh, talk about tonight. So, uh, the first, uh, item is the Fitch High School Asbestos Abatement Project for the summer of two thousand twenty. Um, and at this point, I'm, uh, waiting, uh, for some signatures on the signatory pages uh, that are out to, uh, different people throughout the community. Uh, and, uh, also the, uh, certified minutes from both the board and from the town council uh, indicating that, uh, we have permission to move forward with this. And once we receive that, uh, we'll be putting the whole package together, and, uh, Ken and I, uh, will, uh, submit this to the state with a request for approval on the project. I might note that, uh, one of the, one of the projects that, uh, we had to do this past week, uh, speaking of asbestos, we had some water damage at Fitch High School, which caused some, uh, hot tiles to buckle, uh, so we actually had to have, uh, the contractor come in and do a, uh, a quick, uh, abatement project at the high school, uh, across from the bank. So it was a small area, but, uh, we were fortunate that the kids were out of the, out of the building anyways, uh, and so we were able to do it, uh, without having to close the school down. Um, but this, um, indicates that, that, this just shows that it's important for us to get this done at this time anyways. Uh, second, second item are, is school buildings update. Uh, the two thousand twenty projects, both at Thames River and Mystic River, uh, continue to move along, uh, pretty quickly. Very good progress there. Uh, Groton Middle School, uh, they're, uh, working on the punch list, and they're, uh, I, I see that the roofers are, are almost done. Most of that punch list, uh, should be done by the end of this month, so we should have, uh, full, um, occupation of the building and, and approvals for, for the entire building by the end of the month. Couple of the projects that we did, uh, while the kids were out of the school, um, were again that asbestos abatement project at Fitch High School. We also, um, uh, with, with, uh, the temperatures being down on the buildings because the kids, uh, were out of the buildings, uh, uh, for longer periods of times, we've, uh, cut back on some of the, um, fuel usage, and, uh, so, uh, we had some peel and paint in the, uh, in the wood shop at the high school, so we were able to get in there and take care of that. And, uh, I'm also working on a project right now, uh, working with, uh, contractors to get estimates on. And I'm also working on a project right now, working with contractors to get estimates on the project for the old gym at the high school. Because again, that, the walls are peeling in there and, and again, the cooler temperatures haven't helped it any and it's pretty important. With, once, once Dr. Grineer and Susan said that we were going to take that extra week after Christmas, it seemed like it was a good idea to get in there and get that taken care of as soon as we can. So that, that's coming up as well. The last item on my list is something that everybody was talking about when I first signed on, and that's Thursday, Wednesday and the Thursday. And now that we have a new middle school, previously, the town plowed Cutler Middle School for us and the city public works department plowed West Side Middle School. And we did some cleanup, some smaller parts of that, but they did the bulk of the work there. But the town isn't able to help us out with Groton Middle School, other than coming up and doing the driveway. They're going to do the driveway for us, which is substantial, but there's still a lot of parking lot and lower, lower driveways that we're going to have to clear. And so this, this Thursday is going to be a test run for our department regarding how, how long it's going to take us to do that additional plowing. And so we'll be able to figure out exactly how much time we're going to need in, in these storms, whether we go with a one-hour delay, two-hour delay, three-hour delay, or, or cancellations, depending upon how much snow we get in, in storms as we go through the winter. So test run on Thursday and should be back to work on Friday. Hopefully everybody, everybody will be back on Friday. So that's it.
Any questions for Sam Rita?
Ken, Dr. Grineer, I thought we were able to use virtual classrooms for snow days.
We, we can. There was, it's an option. And, and so a number of districts have either built it into the schedule, they, they literally have snow days. We, we look at our calendar and hypothetically it ends on a Tuesday. So while I was talking, Susan and I were talking to the principals about the possibility of, of using perhaps three, ending on a Friday. But with the high winds, we're, we're a little bit concerned. If it was a smaller storm, maybe it'd be one thing. But we're, we're concerned about, this could be, well, as you said, it could be a really a big storm. So people are going to need some time, so we, and plus, in the middle of this pandemic, having, having a true cancellation day is not a bad thing. And if, please God, we're, we're back in full at the end of the year, then I'll, I'll, I'll take, I'll take a snow day now and give me, give me a five-day-a-week regular day at the end of the year.
Thank you.
That's pretty much the thinking.
Any other questions for Sam? Sam, once again, thank you for your crew for working so hard on Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday and Friday, but specifically on Wednesday, and getting our buildings all clean and, and ready for the next cohort. I really appreciate all that you do on that.
Yeah, they do a great job.
They do, please. Yeah, it's, please send the board's appreciation.
Will do.
All right. Here we know for the questions for Sam or Ken, I am moving us on to committee reports. Lee, I know.
Well, yes, we met earlier this, this, in December. We have, interestingly, a new first policy to read for first time. Also, I, I only got to see the information from Dean about two and a half hours ago that he had questions about our old business about sexual harassment, which is supposed to be our second reading. So maybe, I don't know if Susan had a chance to look at that either.
So.
You didn't.
So, yeah, so Lee, I think what I, what I'm going to suggest is that in lieu that we just received this information, that it's not fair for us to go through a second.
Exactly.
And so I'm going to ask for that to be tabled, but just be mindful, folks, that when we have like stuff, especially when, when the second reading, to make sure that it, it gets enough time to get back into policy for them to have that conversation again, or to any, any committee. But I'm, I'm going to ask Lee that once we get to that, whether, whether we can table that and move that to the next meeting.
I think that's an excellent idea. Thank you, Ken.
Curriculum, that would be my friend Andrea, where are you? There you are.
Right here. And we met today and Ms. Hodge presented the new curriculum, the new curriculum from the state for the new African-American Studies class. And it's a very rich conversation, so we invited her to come to the, to the next COW with your permission.
Absolutely. Just make sure that I did that as an agenda item. Finance and facilities, every, there's, I'm, I'm losing where people are. So Jay, you're now on my left side of my, my screen in case you were wanting to.
Sorry if I moved. So we met on November 30th. We did a in-depth discussion of the budget. And we also discussed the item that's going to be coming up later today for a vote about the district credit card. We discussed the asbestos abatement project, which again will be, I believe, 48% reimbursed by the state. Rather than running around and taking care of hotspot tiles one at a time, just get it all done. And then we briefly discussed the proposal they're working on for the high school fieldhouse design study.
Thank you. Wow, that's exciting. I can't wait to hear more about that. All right, Rita.
Yes, we had a LEARN board meeting last Thursday, December 10th. We, our superintendent's perspective was delivered by Patrice McCarthy, who is the deputy director and general counsel for CAPE. She said that there is going to be a long session at the legislature this year. There were going to be more opportunities for the public to be able to participate because the whole session will be done virtually. And that, they're, one of the important topics that they're going to be discussing is the vaccinations and the intent that all teaching staff will be in a group directly behind first responders and healthcare workers, which I thought was wonderful. So I was very, very happy to hear that. They're also going to be discussing the ECS, the funding for the districts, and that could have an impact on Groton. There was another legislative update from Connecticut. The six regional RAS in Connecticut are going to be asking for increased magnet school funding and school readiness funding, which has not had an increase in eight years. So that's definitely a priority, as well as the teacher residency program, which Groton has signed on to, which will help hopefully at least double our, the minority teachers across the whole state of Connecticut, which would be great, because many of the RAS are doing the same program that Groton has done now is going to do with LEARN. I think the last part of my meeting was really something very informative that I hope we can have a discussion on in the future at the COW meeting. There were a lot of concerns being brought up by how much students were going to need to be caught up because of the pandemic. So we have to have a discussion about how are we going to prepare for this challenge? How do we assist teachers in preparing for new models and practices that will assist the students towards regaining the momentum needed to achieve their academic performance? So we really need to have some careful planning and long discussions about this topic in the future.
So Rita, I've already written that down as an agenda topic, but I kind of see that it makes sense that when we do the, the object code, where we're looking at instruction, that we really are talking about that at that point. Because my sense is, is that, not just that time period, but that, that also helps with our conversations in terms of what, what do we need, what, what are, what are we, what is the district going to need to be working with our students as they, as we come out of the pandemic and we go back into full-time classes?
And, and everybody discussed summer school.
And once again, and once again, Rita, two points, right?
Yes.
Is that, right? That we need to like have those conversations during the budget time so that we can make sure that we have funds, funds available to, to make sure that we have got summer school. And maybe we need.
And how we're going to assess our students and find out what's really going on and how we can help the teachers.
Right.
During this period. Thank you.
Yep. Andrea, you attended the town council Board of Ed RTM meeting last week, I think, or weeks ago. And is there anything that, that came out of that meeting that you would like to report on?
No, not, not really. I, it was a wonderful meeting. There was a, a great deal of discussion. And I wish you had told me that because I would have thought about it.
I know.
And so I have nothing to report. I'm sorry.
Actually, Kathy Chase took really comprehensive notes and we'll send them to you tomorrow.
Okay, now I just wanted to, appropriately, as we report.
I'll take notes next time.
And then last Wednesday, we were able to gather as an AGSA, GEA and Board of Ed liaison. It was kind of, we added it to our normal schedule, just because we're not in normal times. And so I once again am very appreciative of the leadership that we have, both, both the admin, actually the central office and the teachers in terms of the work that they are doing. And I loved how you guys worked us through the virtual learning experience and the, the pros and cons. It's, it's still my gold standard. The gold standard is to be with your class in front of you, all of them, all at once. But I, I, I myself was incredibly appreciative of that conversation. And I believe, Susan, you are going to send us those talking points. Because we, as, as we were talking about in that meeting, are, the Board of Ed gets lots of comments from people about not being, not being in school and was virtual versus hybrid. And I really thought that there was some really good conversation and some really good wording for me so that we can make sure that, not that it's a company line, but that we're just talking about the same things and the same reasons. And so I actually think Seth, you were, child-centered learning, this I think is how you helped frame it for me. And for me, that was my light bulb. And so I appreciate for that, that conversation. Jay or Rita, am I missing, or Andrea, am I missing something from those conversations?
No, I think you did a great job.
All right, Groton Scholarship, my friend Lee.
To the best of my knowledge, we are meeting on Thursday for our December meeting, and I assume I will be there.
Okay, good. I'm glad for the assumption. Jay, do you have anything to add about the athletic field?
Only that we're going to have a meeting this Thursday night to tweak the final presentation, at which point I will send it all to, to all the board members to review. It's my understanding we're all being invited to a joint meeting with the town council on January 12th to discuss the proposals for athletic fields across the town.
Ms. Joan, can you make sure that that gets on our revised list for the Board of Ed and Town Council? I also think that we're going to need to get on our town, on the agenda, just when we're going to meet with the town council to go over our budget stuff. Maybe that's in February. I can't remember my, I have no such thing as memory anymore. But I am moving us on to the consent agenda. And the consent agenda is all matters listed under, the consent agenda are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion. Points of clarification will be allowed. I would take a, I would take a motion, Liz, I think. Consent agenda?
I make a motion that we approve all matters listed under the consent agenda that are considered to be routine and will be enacted upon by one motion.
Thank you. Can I have a second to that?
Second?
I have Lee. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of approving of the consent agenda, please say aye.
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 Oppose? Abstain? Okay, that has carried. We are now moving on to old business. As I mentioned earlier.
Ken?
Yes.
Excuse me. Under that, just want to put out a thank you.
Thank you.
To Chelsea Groton Foundation through its Acts of Kindness Program. And on behalf of Cheya Patel has made a donation of $100 to be used for events and supplies for students at Groton Middle School.
Liz, thank you very much. It's further proof that it takes more than one person to raise a chairperson. I'm, I'm moving on to the old business. And as I mentioned earlier, the first two have to do about the sexual harassment. And considering the fact that we just received the information about some comments about that, I'm going to ask that we table that so it can go back to policy for review of those comments and then have them come back to us.
If, if I might, Kim. The last time, and I don't remember the date, but the last time that we met and we had a first reading of these, I had raised a number of concerns. It was, well, there were a lot of them. And I think it was felt that I should probably put something in writing and it's, I began to do that immediately. I already had an outline of some sort, but the calendar isn't, isn't being kind to me. And I, you know, as I approached today, I thought, oh, good. I, I kept saying, well, I better get this out, I better get this out. And here I was today and I thought, well, I better get it out in the morning at least, you know, that kind of thing. They'll be pretty, pretty ticked off at me. It didn't happen, so I was left with either sending it out when I could send it out, or not sending it out at all, and then waiting till the meeting. I understand this probably, you know, it derails it from this agenda, but it's, it's a little more of a fleshing out of what I mentioned the last time, the same points that I mentioned the last time. And if, if they want to be taken seriously, I'm happy to do that. My understanding is we already have a policy in place for this, and this is intended to update and align ourselves with, with Title IX regs, current Title IX regs. So I apologize if this bumps it from the schedule. But I'm secretly glad to see that you're, you're willing to bump it to, to consider my points.
Listen, Dean, I'd much rather have it be delayed and have all points considered than to be rushed through and not to meet the needs and not have another set of eyes on it. So that's not a problem. And I'm, I'm, once again, happy, I'm really happy to do that and appreciate your efforts into that. And you know what? Life happens when you're living. So I think I, for one, understand about how the calendar gets ahead. But I am going to move us on to the second business. Rita, if you could do me a favor and could you read the motion under new business number one, please?
Yes. To approve policy P 6142 dot 102, social and emotional learning as a first reading.
Can I have a second?
Second?
All those, okay, so can I have discussion? So that would be Susan and that would be Lee.
Lee, you want me to just get us started?
Sure.
So as you know, in Groton Public Schools, children's social emotional wellbeing is very important. The first sentence of this policy says that the Board of Education believes that children's social and emotional development are essential, underpinning foundations to school readiness and academic success. And I love that line. Denise was instrumental in helping us frame this and research it and actually attended some of the state webinars. And the state thinks this is so important that in our flexibility plan, it's encouraged teachers to put social emotional learning as one of their goals. So, you know, I think we're all in on this, have always been. But I'll let Denise kind of give us some of the specificity on this particular policy.
Thank you, Susan. This is a new policy. It's a new policy for many districts and it really is a focus of our efforts this year in response to the COVID-19 pandemic and really trying to support our students and support their social emotional learning and their social, social emotional needs. One of the things that we've learned is that social emotional learning consists of six standards. There is a nice chart at the end of the policy that highlights the six standards. And they're self-awareness, self-management, social awareness, relationship skills and responsible decision-making. And our message to the teachers is that many teachers, if not all, address social emotional learning frequently through their, you know, lessons that involve, you know, talking to a partner, cooperative learning, working. um, working as a group in a breakout room, um, reflective journals. There's a host of activities on our social emotional learning, um, page on this district website that illustrate this. So we really want teachers to, um, to, to feel comfortable with the fact that our, our focus on social and emotional learning is not new. It's something that they do each day and they don't even realize they're doing it. So the, um, Safe School Climate Committee is working, um, with the buildings to present information to the staff so that they understand um, what social emotional learning consists of, what examples of it are. And the chart gives different competencies and indicators so that they can use that as a guide. Um, as they're writing their goals, as they're developing their lessons and as they're working with their teams. So that we are supporting our students, most especially this year. Um, the policy also indicates, um, again, this is not new, but it's something that will now be uh, part of our policy manual in terms of the three tiers that the district has to support social emotional learning. Obviously, tier one is a universal approach, uh, for all students. Whereas tier two is more targeted for students who need more targeted assistance. And tier three would be more, uh, long-term and more frequent support possibly provided through some of our support staff, like a social worker, a school psychologist or a school counselor. Um, so again, not necessarily anything real, anything new. Really validating and confirming the work that we've been doing and giving teachers permission um, to know that they're doing the right thing, uh, in their lesson plans and giving them some ideas for how they can continue to support students um, throughout the pandemic and next year.
Are there any questions or discussion for this policy, Lee?
I would just like to say that Denise gave us the most incredible program on this. Um, I'm just grateful to have her on our team. And also to say that Susan, as superintendent, has decided to keep policy. And I cannot tell you how happy I am with that. Thank you.
Thank you, Lee. Is there any other conversations about the first reading of the social emotional learning? Liz?
I just have a quick question. Um, I, did I miss something? Did this get printed and sent to us? Because I haven't seen these at all. It's not in my, I didn't get it in my packet, you know, in my envelope. And I didn't get it online. So I was just wondering. Um, Lee, when was it, was it?
It was in mine.
Yeah, it was in mine.
It wasn't in mine too. I'm sorry, guys. It's not in mine. I just been going through it all. So could somebody please send it to me? Thank you, please. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Dean?
Right. My father used to play the role of the blanket. I hated it. Um, but this is very, very, very important policy. Uh, I can see the attraction, uh, to this. Uh, I suspect, and as I'm a parent, I still have some underage kids. My first instinct is to look at this and say, well, jeepers, isn't this what the parents are supposed to be doing? Having said that, I understand that not all parents are doing it. And a lot of ways, schools are picking up the slack for what isn't done, maybe can't be done, uh, in the home. We've been doing this for some time. And I understand it's being done on an informal basis. Uh, so I guess one of my concerns is, um, well, first of all, it's being done in response to COVID. COVID has prompted this, but I imagine this isn't going to be a temporary measure. It's going to be in place, uh, for as long as we keep it in place. COVID is simply the, the, the reason for doing it this year. Uh, but my concern is while we implement policy and administration and, and staff implement the actual details. You know, will the details involve, for example, formal assessments of the kids? You know, are we going to be scoring the kids? And I'm not, these kids aren't going to be graded on their, on their emotions, but you know, the discussions of, you know, labeling your emotions, identifying your emotions, a lot of the stuff appears wonderful. Um, and there's a lot of value to it, but is it the school's role to ask personal questions of the kids? Maybe to ask about the family. Uh, we do this when kids are in a, we're having, having a problem. We, I understand that. Uh, and they're referred to a professional, but we intend to be doing this district-wide, kid-wide, K through 12, uh, regardless of whether a child's having a problem. And, uh, I think if you were to run this by a lot of parents, their instinct would be, I, I, I'll be blunt. Their instinct would be to, to feel insulted uh, uh, by this. I think the understanding is the district means well. And again, I can see the attraction to it, but it's one of these areas, when I look at it, I think maybe maybe we're going too far with this thing. And I'm, I'm concerned that the details, once it's implemented will be highly intrusive. There, there must be data gathering. There is a mention in here of evidence-based, et cetera. Are we going to be gathering data on the children? Um,
So Dean?
Yeah.
Let me just, let me, um, help, help, um, help center you for just a second. And Denise, I probably need your, um, backup along with Susan and Mike. Um, is, is that as Denise, um, noted, this is something that the school has implemented for multiple years. And I think that the research is out there that the role of the educational system is, is that it's, it's, it's multi-tiered. It's for not only just the education of the students, but along with understanding the academic education of students, it's to see a student in its whole. It's to see its, it's to see its students in its entirety. So multiple years ago, I think that, um, the school district, um, implemented a program positive behavioral supports. How am I doing? Wow. I don't believe I remember that. Um, so PB, um, so it's positive behavioral intervention supports. And what it, what it does is it was that it helps give a framework for, for teachers to begin to sort of think about how do you, how do you teach to a whole child? Um, so evidence-based isn't meaning that people are going to be gathering data, though the support staff might be needing to do that, especially if a child has been identified who has learning issues um, or, or needs, or needs that are, that are in, that are, might be impacting the academic. But when we talk about evidence-based, it's really, that's actually what grants are requiring uh, in, in the human service field, um, for me, Dean. Um, if I'm going to apply for a grant, I have to have an evidence-based model. So I have to have a model that has been tried and true someplace else. So I, what I heard Denise say is, is that this is just kind of giving credence to something that your children have already been exposed to because it's part of how we think about the whole child in, in, in academics. And so.
Oh, I, 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 I understand. I understand. And I, I also know for my own children that this has been done on a, on a non-policy, informal, if you will, basis. Um, I, I think that, again, my concern is that, um, it, it it's sort of, if we adopt the policy, do I just sort of wait and see how it's implemented and then say, my goodness, it looks like we're doing basically a every child is going to be subject essentially to a, you know, a psych profile, child psych profile, whether they need the help or not.
And that's not what it's saying, Dean. So.
All I'm, all I'm saying is we do policy and the details are in the implementation. And if I say yes, and then I, what am I going to do when I'm very unhappy with the implementation and it looks highly intrusive? Uh, a- as I've mentioned, this isn't going to be my last word. I'm simply telling you what my first thoughts are when I see something like this.
Okay.
There'll be a second reading, I know.
Right. So I, what I would, um, what I would encourage you to do is that, um, I think policy is going to be meeting in a couple of weeks or to make sure that you know when the policy meeting is and, and maybe even asking the chair, which is Lee, whether you could kind of speak to your concerns regarding this policy. And, and so that when it comes to the second reading, we'll, we'll have some understanding about your thought-out, um, comments about that.
All right, thank you.
Can I add, Dean, oftentimes we will add regulations to the policy at the same time, which talks about implementation. Board's responsibility is to vote on the policy. It's staff's responsibility to design implementation. But we often do it together because I think it's really important for the board to see the whole picture. So that is something that we can actually do. But this has really come down through legislation that this is necessary. Um, and I would have to tell you, if you looked at the chart and you looked at the, um, main ingredients of what we're trying to do, it's, you know, when we hear college and career ready, how often have businesses and corporations and the Navy told us this is what they're looking for in people. These soft skills aren't so soft. You know, a self-awareness, a self-management, social awareness, relationship skills, responsible decision-making. These are must-haves from, so I think a partnership between families and our school system are what makes us stronger. So I agree, families need to know that what we're working on and how we're doing it. And I think probably this year with the hybrid model and remote model, they've had like a little window of opportunity to kind of see into some of this work that we're doing. Um, but I agree and would certainly, um, you know, appreciate you attending if you would like. And, um, Lee and I just have to set the agenda and, and set the time because I don't think the first, the first, um, uh, week is going to be manageable, but maybe the second.
Really? I, I wouldn't know why. Is there any other question about that policy, Rita?
Um, I was just going to suggest that. Um, I was going to suggest that maybe Denise could be invited to a committee of the whole and share what she shared with the policy committee. That was, you know, so meaningful. Um, and, and then have a little discussion about our policies as a board and what we're responsible for.
That'd be great. I got that as an agenda topic.
Good idea.
Rosemary, sorry.
Um, actually, the, um, implementing evidence-based means that we already have the evidence base. We're not gathering information. But what I see this as being very important in, um, in that we are codifying and acknowledging its importance. And, um, and acknowledging and codifying how, how teachers are actually doing it and how they can um, document do, doing this. And if we need any more, um, information, we can certainly go to the direct source for emotional intelligence, which is, um, Peter Salovey, the, um, uh, president of Yale, who came up with this, uh, many, quite a few years ago. He didn't have gray hair when he did it. Um, and, um, but it's something that we have been incorporating into society and how, and its importance for many years. And it's time we gave teachers acknowledgement for doing it.
Thank you, Rosemary. Any further discussion on this? Hearing none. All those in favor of the reading of the policy of, um, P six, one, four, dash, two, one, O, two, social emotional learning as first reading, please say aye.
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 Just for first reading, oppose. One, abstain. Liz, did you get that, Joan? All right, I'm gonna.
No, I didn't get the no vote.
That was Dean.
Thank you.
And Liz abstained.
Right.
And so I'm going to move us on to the, the next motion, which to approve the authorization of the business manager to execute a P card program agreement on its, on its behalf. Can I have a second to that motion?
I'll second that.
I've got Rosemary. So this, um, has everything to do with the fact that we had a committee of the whole meeting on that last week, um, in terms of a purchase card of moving that, um, because when we, when we did the agreement with Dr. Grineer, it had all Dr. Grineer's and under recommendation of Ken Knight, we were going to do a per- purchase card. I don't know. I don't know why Dr. Grineer doesn't want to have us continue to spend, you know, on his dime. I think it's kind of silly. Are there any other questions about that?
No.
Okay. All those in favor of the motion to approve the authorization of the business manager um, to execute, execute a P card program agreement on its behalf, please say aye.
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 Oppose, abstain. That motion has carried. Um, the next motion that's on the floor is to approve the revision of the 2021, 22 school calendar, so not the finish of this, but next year. And Dr. Grineer, can you walk us through why we need to do that?
Yes.
Oh, we don't, we didn't receive that.
Yeah, we haven't got that.
Yeah.
Haven't got it.
No.
Let me, let me.
Do we wait till next year?
We, we don't, i- it can. I'll just give you something to think about. The, uh, I apologize. I should have sent, uh, the information. The, the calendar that the board approved, uh, in- includes, uh, April vacation. It's the second week of, of April. Uh, from the, the, the first to the 15th. The, the, uh, uh, almost all the other districts in the region have, have sort of reconsidered that. Usually we do the second week of April. Uh, but the second week of April starts on the 11th. Uh, and the 15th is Good Friday of 2022. And so a number of districts have decided that they're going to, for the regional calendar, have, uh, the April vacation start on Friday, the 15th of April, and then go through that next week. It gives us eight weeks after the February vacation and it gives us eight weeks before the end of the school year. Uh, and I looked, of course, the board, w- we already proposed this. I, I think a number of districts did, but now they've gone back and, and n- number of districts have said, we're doing the third week anyway. Which sort of ruins the whole idea because we, we don't want to have to send buses to, to ledger, for example. Uh, we, if they're going to be on vacation the third week and we're going to be on vacation the second week. So the idea is not, it's, it's not urgent, but, uh, I can tell you, a, a number of districts have, uh, have opted to, to do this. So it just, it, it, it made sense to, to me that the 15th would be Good Friday. So we just have a little bit longer April vacation.
So what I'm going to do is that Susan, I'm just going to ask that we, um, put this on our Board of Ed, um, agenda for January. Um, but making sure that we have the schedule with the highlighted of what, what it's being asked to be changed. Um, at this point, board, I'm asking, are there any communications that you want to share? Rita?
Um, I would like to know if we can observe, um, moment of silence for all the students and staff who were killed at Sandy Hook eight years ago today. As, for a minute, just to think about, just to reflect on that. Is that possible?
Sure.
Sure.
Thank you. Um, I received all the same communications, I believe, that all the other board members have received from parents. And, and I really appreciate them contacting the board. Thank you.
Kind of trying to moving people around, but if there's any other correspondence that people have received outside of what Rita has received, I don't want to sw- swat anyone's voice. Okay, I'm going to move us on. Um, I've got the agenda items of Andrea for a committee of the whole for curriculum. Also, uh, summer school conversation and also for the social emotional to come back to the committee of the whole. I do want to remind the board that we're going to have sort of smaller committee of the holes because we're going to, um, for the first month, six, seven weeks, because we're doing budget. Um, but any other agenda topics that you guys want to?
Alexa, off, please.
Uh, sorry. Um, um, it's just a sad day. Okay, so, um, any other agenda topics that I'm not bringing up? Board is, um, recognizing that we've got lots of dates. Joan, I think I asked you to add, um, the field one, um, to the council. That would be great. Andrea?
Motion to adjourn.
Can I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstain. Motion has carried. Board, it is now seven, 12, and I would like to enter into our second special meeting. Hopefully, Dr. Grineer, you know nothing about this.
I have no idea what you're talking about.
So I am calling to order the meeting and it's seven, 12. And it is a special, special Board of Ed meet, special, but a special.
Come on, Kim.
Board of Education meeting. The first motion and the only motion is on the floor is this for the board. Board of Education meeting. The first motion and the only motion is on the floor is this for the board. I ask to approve the naming of the Groton Middle School Library Media Center as a doctor, as Dr. Michael Gwinier. Can I have a second to that?
Yes.
I'll second it.
I am very moved.
Is there any discussion? Dr. Gwinier, I don't know if you can see that.
I think we should ask him to invite Ms. White.
Oh, she's here.
She's, I hear her clapping downstairs.
Oh, great.
Well, thank you very much.
Hearing no other discussion. All those in favor of the motion to approve the naming of the Groton Middle School Library Media Center as Dr. Michael Gwinier, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Oppose, abstain, the motion carries.
Thank you. I am shocked.
Andrea? I need motion.
To adjourn?
To adjourn.
Motion to adjourn?
Yes.
Second.
All the, okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 So now, Dr. Gwinier.
Yes.
I don't know if you have noticed.
I've noticed a few extra people.
We've had a few extra people and maybe some even people that you have might recognize.
Yes, I recognize many of them.
All right. The the first thing, so I just would, I'm going to just invite you to kind of sit back and kind of soak it in.
Yes.
Did I bring you up a glass of wine? Yeah, that would be good. I got the gin and tonics, Susan.
Hi, Dad. How are you?
And so, you know what, you guys, for the next couple of seconds, let's just say hi to everyone. Say hi to Mike. Just open up, unplug yourselves, and just say hi for a couple of seconds. Go ahead.
I know if Mark wanted to put up the tribute, so we can show him what he's in for.
Wow, this is, I am shocked. Debbie, you kept this whole thing secret. It's unbelievable.
Oh, I'm I'm sick with anxiety.
And my more than words friends are here and adding friends, Mark, John, and Laura. Uh, this is, and and I see Fiona. I have to move around the Hollywood squares here. This is, I'm in the boys' holy mackerel.
There's Maya. Did you see Maya in the corner?
Oh, look at that, sweetie.
So um Susan, I know that you would think that it would be nice for the tribute to be on the screen. Unfortunately, when we do that, it really stops people being able to say, see faces. And so since I'm a very visual person, I'm gonna request that's not, but Mike, I'm gonna make sure that you get the sheet. And my understanding from, and I also just want to say thank you to Susan, to Liz and to Andrea, to Mark, um, to some of the central office staff who are helping to kind of put this and pull this off. Um, my understanding is is that when we can gather together freely and safely, um, that we will also have another time, um, because there's many people who were not able to kind of come um and um, but just so that you can do the thing that you do really well, which is to is to really kind of soak in and appreciate instead of on the screen stuff, you know, with a one-by-one screen. Um, so um, I just wanted to let you know that that was going. Um, but I uh, so I'm gonna pretend to be the emcee, but we know how that's gonna go. Um, so I'm just really gonna follow through on what is here. Um, and I'm, and um, I think that the first thing is, uh, do we hear from the Fitch High School Orchestra and Chorus? Is that the first thing that's on the list, Mark?
Yes. Groton Middle School.
Or or was that beforehand?
We've already done that Groton Middle School, so we can actually move to your tribute um first, Kim.
The Fitch High School Chorus?
That's, that's gonna happen at another time.
Okay.
Yeah.
So I am, I guess I am gonna need to, can we, can you share the screen on that one, Susan?
Sure.
So you can see, Dr. Gwinier, that this was really well rehearsed, and we spent-
I'm amazed we got this far.
We're finding people, you know, that we can kind of just, um, so is this, is this gonna be the plaque now?
No, this is-
This is a program.
That's a program.
And we've, we've already heard the orchestra, so you're going to, um, and we've seen the plaque.
Okay.
And if you had any words that you wanted to say, you could say them now, or we could, we've got Heather Summers, who's been waiting in the wings, so um, we can go through.
Yeah.
And then I can take it off, but you see that we have Heather Summers?
Yeah, I got it.
Chris Conley, Joe.
Yeah, I got it. I got it. You can, you can stop. I just wanted to make sure that I was on the right thing. So um, so Dr. Gwinier, we just wanted to kind of, um, once again, this is not everyone who wanted to be here. Um, and once again, we are offering another time for people to kind of come and be with you in person. But for tonight, uh, we're gonna start it off with hearing from our state senator, Heather Summers. If she's here, I have no idea where she is.
I am here. Can you hear me?
Thank you, Heather.
Yes.
Yes.
Um, well, congratulations, Dr. Gwinier. All of us, our entire delegation, is uh here to celebrate your retirement and to thank you for your service to the town and to all of the students and teachers of our community. And we have a wonderful proclamation for you um from the governor's office, but because the Capitol is closed because of COVID, um, I can't get it to you until that later time when all these magical things are gonna happen. We're gonna have the chorus, you'll have a framed citation. This is just the warm-up for the, for the real retirement party.
For the big event.
Hopefully, um, everyone will have gin and tonics, you know, not just to us, not just the one special lady.
I'll provide it. I'll provide it.
Okay, perfect. So, you know, I was thinking about what to say about Dr. Gwinier, and I I thought I would sort of roll back in time a little bit. I can't believe it's been seven years. That went by with a snap of a finger. And to really uh put in perspective, um, my first introduction to Dr. Gwinier, which was um actually through John Heller, who I know is on here. We met at the Old Norm's Diner, and we were trying to figure out together, how how can we bring Groton together? Groton had experienced um quite a few failed referendums. We had a a tough situation uh with a a previous uh person employed by the, by the town. The board was struggling with how to move forward, and John Heller said to me, what we need is Mike Gwinier. We need him here. He can, he can change things for the, for Connecticut and for Groton. And, you know, at that time, I I was the mayor, and it really isn't our decision. It's the Board of Education's decision on on who to hire. So um, I did make a few phone calls and say, you know, this is what I've heard. This, this man comes with a wonderful reputation, although I think your former employer did not want to lose you. So that was a little bit of a, a struggle, but um, you came, and I remember meeting you with John and just the way he had described your enthusiasm, your leadership, your ability to bring people together for a common goal. Is everything that you have accomplished in your seven years that has really flown by in the town of Groton. Um, you took us from being a town that was, um, you know, had low morale with very aging schools and and people trying to decide if they wanted to keep their students within our system, to really renewing our sense of pride and community within our town and bringing us together to create these magnificent schools that are really showcases of of our town, um, driving us through the largest school referendum project in Connecticut history with, I will add, the most referendums to get it passed. We did it once, I think, three times, right? And that, it's like your retirement party, we're just gonna keep doing it. So um, uh, that being said, Groundhog Day of re- of referendums, it showed how the community reinforced that decision time and time again, and that would not have been possible without your vision for Groton two uh twenty twenty. And um, a a few things I'd like to mention, it's been a bumpy road sometimes with our funding at the state. And um, you know, we had a little bit of a mishap in the first tranche of mon- of money to build the schools. Every time, no matter what time of night it was, calling Dr. Gwinier from my office, he always picked up, and he always sounded like he was happy to hear from me, which is something that is quite endearing. Sometimes people don't always say that, but when he picks up the phone, it's always like, hi, Heather, how are you doing? And um, you know, just last year, when I was able to call him the night before Groton was um awarded, rightfully so, um, about six hundred thousand dollars that it was due, you could hear the joy in his, his voice when he heard the news. And he was so excited, not for him, but for the students and the teachers in the town. And um, you can see, he just lives and breathes education and wants what's best for the community and the students and loves them, and you can feel the um, the interaction and the the love that the students and the teachers have for him. And although you will be very missed by so many, uh, your accomplishments are, uh, you know, they, they will not be forgotten. We're gonna have a media center named after you. But uh, you know, when you look at these brand-new schools, um, that that's your legacy. And I I think that's a wonderful note to go on and retire and travel and do all those wonderful things post-COVID that you'll be able to do. So on behalf of the entire General Assembly, we uh want to wish you the very best on this memorable occasion of your retirement, and we hope for your most continued success in whatever it is, is the, in the next chapter of your future, and that you always will be um Gro- known as the person for Groton twenty twenty. We are so humbled by all the work that you have done for us and our community, and um, we are looking forward to having you be an active part of our community in other ways. And we just wanted to be here to thank you for everything. This could not have been accomplished without your dedication, without those late meetings, without all those, you know, long meetings with uh Lenny Winkler and Melanie Curry and with the group that you, you really coalesce this group from all different backgrounds and different viewpoints together, that really was able to drive that home, and and that's a true gift and quality. And I thank you from the bottom of my heart, because the students of Groton are so much better served, as are the parents. So congratulations tonight on this wonderful precursor for your big retirement party that we will have shortly post-COVID, and uh, we wish you the very best. Congratulations.
Thank you very much. Thanks, Heather. I appreciate all those words.
Chris?
Thank you, everyone. Um, I'm gonna speak on behalf of myself and Joe Delacruz. He couldn't be here tonight, but I'm sure he'll be at the post-COVID party with now gin and tonics and hopefully cake too, one of my personal favorites. Uh, Joe and I, you know, we've, we were with Dr. Gwinier again, just like Heather was in the beginning. We were all serving in different roles, uh, but so pleased when he came on board that we ended a a period of darkness and came into a period of cooperating, working together, um, and getting things done for the most important residents of our town, the students. Again, I I know you'll probably miss the texts at one or two in the morning, but Susan will be able to step right into that role, and we'll be calling and texting her at the wee hours, asking all sorts of oddball questions that are very important to the budget or new projects. Uh, we'll let you know about it during the morning, during business hours, so you can enjoy your sleep from us. Uh, but you have been a shining light for all of us in all of our different roles, be it where we were on the RTM, where Joe and Heather were on the council, and then joining us up at Hartford. I appreciate you coming um many mornings for um public hearings that we need to do at the last minute for a variety of things that popped out with those new schools, be it the driveway, be it whatever it was. You were there for us and there for the students every step along the way. Uh, and I, and I hope you get to enjoy our retirement, enjoy those grandbabies. I was so happy we all got to see the little ones, where I know um you'll be spending the light of your life and spending some good quality time with them.
Yes, thank you. Thank you so much, Chris.
So, Dr. Gwinier, the next group of people that you'll be hearing from are the people um who are on the board. Um, and um, the first person that I know has asked to speak was Rita, so I'm gonna turn to Rita.
Sure. Thank you. I hope you can all hear me, right?
Yes.
Yes? Good, okay. Mike, I can see you in the middle of my screen. So, on behalf of the school board and the town of Groton, I personally owe you a debt of gratitude for what you have provided for all of us over the last seven years. After Dr. Mitchell retired, the board went from periods of conflict and uncertainty to your reign, in which the board, the teachers, and yes, the students, were able to benefit from having a superintendent for all seasons, one who knew how to handle economic downturns, social unrest, and even pandemics. Not an easy task. Our confidence in you has been so great that we have never doubted that you had situations under control, no matter how difficult they were. We will miss your knowledge, your understanding and your intellect, and more than anything else, your warm and caring personality. We wish you the best as you move on, continuing to travel, enjoying your family, and embarking on writing a book. On behalf of the citizens of Groton and the board, we thank you for your accessibility and your leadership and for being the special person you are. Thank you.
Thank you, Rita. I appreciate it.
Lee?
Um, I'm feeling like Rita, I'm for Clint, if I can use a Yiddish word. Um, every, every December, you and Deb hosted a wonderful, wonderful-
Oh, yes.
-party for the Board of Ed and our spouses. Um, and on one of those evenings, I was talking to your son-in-law, Clint Kennedy, and I said how much I love your family. And he said, you know, Lee, if there were a medal for best-in-laws, I think I won. Um, if there were a medal for the best superintendent ever, I think I speak for the whole board when I tell you that you are the winner and we are better for it.
Thank you. Thank you.
Jay?
Jay or Jane?
Yes.
Jay.
Dr. Gwinier, from, from serving as a captain in the Coast Guard, to teaching in the classroom, to leading several school districts as superintendent, you, you leave a legacy of service and dedication. You brought stability to our district uh by leading a series of initiatives that will benefit students for many years to come. And while leading the district, your focus has always been on our students. Um, you, you exemplify the Coast Guard motto, semper paratus, always ready. And as Rita said, we owe you a debt of gratitude, um, pressuring in what will be known as the Gwinier era. And we wish you all the best.
Thank you, Jay.
Liz?
Mike, I'm gonna get emotional too. You know me.
Yeah.
Sorry, guys. But when you first came to Groton, our system was in crisis. And it was quite, quite broken. And you came in and you gave us a clear course. We finally had our captain. And I want to say thank you. I'm gonna miss you, Mike.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you.
Um, God bless and enjoy retirement, because I'm gonna tell you, it's awesome. Just don't run for a position for at least two years. Thank you, Mike. And like I said, I, I just can't thank you enough for all the support that you've done for the kids. For me personally, it's, it's a real pleasure.
Thank you. Appreciate it, Liz.
Andrea?
Mike, I look at you as a father figure, which is bizarre, because I'm older than you are. But that's, that speaks, that speaks to your wisdom. It speaks to your character. It speaks to who you are as a human being. Bonanotte, and have a wonderful time.
Thank you.
Jane?
Yep. Mike, I I must share, I had no intention of um joining the Board of Education when we moved to Groton. However, Leah um broached me and said, Jane, we need you. Um, you need to do this. Leah, I'll help you do it. And so I um made that, took that big step. It's okay, I'm hearing good things from Leah. And it's been a great experience every day since then. I came to Groton with over thirty years of experience in different roles, and I was very often very frustrated with lack of change, lack of enthusiasm, thinking old ways, et cetera. And as soon as I met you and visited classes with you, talked- And as soon as I met you and visited classes with you, talked with you, I knew it was a whole different ballgame in Groton. This district was moving forward. You, I dubbed the Renaissance man of Groton, and I still feel that way. Absolutely wonderful things were happening, people not knowing, and well, yes, some people were knowing from past experience in other districts, how feet were dragging and the change wasn't being made to move forward. In Groton, you were leading the way and everyone was making great strides and having a good time. I saw that you cared about every child, every teacher, and were in and out of discussions with everyone all the time, and meaningful discussions. Mike, you've made the impossible very possible with new state-of-art school facilities, programs, all strongly supported by the community, not usual in, in many cases across the country. I thank you, Mike. I will never forget this best part of my role as former educator. Absolutely wonderful. I wish you good health, happy days, and lots of days smoothly sailing, smoothly sailing, excuse me, out on the sound.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jane. Rosemary.
Hi, Mike. I have learned so much from you. And you can teach an old dog a lot of new tricks. But the one thing that I was able to connect back to was when I was a student in, in the Groton Public School System, was that I trust the people who are teaching me, and I trust you. And thank you so much. And please keep in contact. Maybe we could rent your house out every year for Christmas. So just thinking.
We've been thinking.
And, and have a wonderful, and we're both approaching retirement. I'm doing it. I'm going kicking and screaming into retirement, but I'm going to get there at some point. So, so take care.
Thank you.
Dean, I, I know you didn't ask, but.
I'm the only one who hasn't said anything yet.
Right.
Well, Dr. Grineer, I've only been on the board, I don't know how long, what, it's been days, weeks, something like that. So I can't speak from that position, but we have worked together in the past. It's been a pleasure, and I want to not repeat what other people have said. I just want to thank you for your service, your, your help with me, and your service to the town of Groton. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thanks, Dean.
Well, you haven't really heard from me, and I just want to keep it real for just a second. All right. Okay. So how many times have I called you? And what I hear in the background is, I got it. All right. Do you know, you and Deb just said the exact same thing. In fact, I knew when I was on the right track, when I was somewhat parallel to what Deb Grineer was talking about. And so actually, Deb, I, I consider that an honor and a privilege to be in, in that line. You know, from breakfast, when I try to get you into a meeting, but you're greeting everyone at the, at the diner. And, and the only thing that has, that you have not helped in is in my family, because I just always assumed that Harry would be a lot like you. And when I said, really? And you respond, when I say really to Harry, he's like, and? And? So I just wanted to, to say thank you, but truly. And it goes back, way back, and I, I'm, I'm not going to go any further, because I'm a, if you think Elizabeth was, or Liz was emotional, wait until you, what you could see from me. But I think you know where I'm coming from, and I think you know how I feel. Thank you for the process. And you're the best.
Thank you.
And you are also my fifth superintendent in seven months. I just want.
Oh, please.
So we are, we are now going to move on to Patrice. I know that Patrice is here. And Dr. Grineer, we did invite Keith Hedrick, and he was not allowed, not allowed. He stated, of course he's allowed, is that he was not able to attend, and he sends his regrets.
Thank you.
Thank you. I just want to start by saying, it's been a pleasure working with you, Dr. Grineer, over many annual budgets on the RTM and on the council, and especially on the 2020 project. All those conference calls and the multiple votes that the Senator mentioned, and reaching out to Representatives Conley and Delacruz to help us out up at the state. We always knew that you had the best interests of the kids at heart. And you always, we always knew you respected your teachers too, which is important. We appreciate all you've done to move Groton forward. And we know you fought, you fought gently and righteously for what you believe to be right and good. And much respect for you, sir. And I wish you healthy and happy retirement. And I hope you have lots of time with your family and you enjoy your quiet time. And it's been a pleasure having you here in Groton as our superintendent, sir.
Thank you. Thank you, Patrice. Appreciate it.
I just want to make sure, was there anyone from the city council that was coming in? Keith Steed, I didn't want to, mis-speak. Okay. Then Sima.
Thank you, Kim. So it's, seems like it's all been said, but not everyone has said it yet. So let me just put my own twist on it. So, you know, I've come to know Dr. Grineer through my position on the RTM. And as many people have already said, he took over the Board of Ed after a particularly turbulent period, and has been able to calm the waters and steer a steady course, seeing to fruition more projects than I can name, three schools among them. I'm always impressed when I go to the Liaison Committee meetings, and the Board of Ed has this amazing list of things they're working on. Kim can probably, can't hardly even get it all out. But he was willing to provide Groton with a needed transition to a new way of governing Groton schools. And he's caring and respectful, civil and plainspoken and honest, and willing to keep coming back to the RTM to provide us with the information that we need to understand and pass the school budget. He brought with him the institutional experience and knowledge gained from a lifetime of dedication to educational achievement. And it's not often that people at his senior career status are that generous with their time, making the effort to teach a new generation of teachers and administrators. Dr. Grineer has also steered the schools through turbulent waters of the COVID pandemic. And we have only to look at the list of accomplishments of Groton students and schools to know he's done a very good job overseeing this large and dynamic district. As a result of his leadership, I believe Groton schools are poised now to move into a productive future for both students and teachers. And I did reach out a little late to some of my members, and I, from Bruce Lacks, who's the RTM Republican Floor Leader and former town mayor, he noted that one quality that Dr. Grineer possessed, possesses, is that he's always very respectful, and he would always respond, or make himself available to whomever reached out. We are a town of several governments, including the RTM, and there are a lot of government officials to hear from. And to my knowledge, when anyone reached out, as I did, he always responded, which is what Senator Summers noted. So I want to thank you, Dr. Grineer. We all wish you good luck in the next chapter of your life. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Sima. Appreciate it.
John.
Hello. I moved here, was hired by the Town Council about three and a half years ago. Thank you, Dean. I see in the audience, one of the ones that hired me. Moved from Michigan after having lived there my whole life. My wife had not even seen the town. And the first night we got here, Debbie and Mike had hosted us at their house, and so a lot of their family were there. And the Town Council was a very relaxed way to get to know people. And Mike gave us, made us both, Mike and Debbie both made us feel welcome, gave us the history of the town, made us feel, told us about the politics, which was very handy coming from Michigan. It's a little more difficult here than Michigan. But it was a very welcoming way to come into this town. After that, Mike and I would regularly meet for breakfast or lunch, discuss issues common to both the town and the school, but also just to, for me to build the, bounce things off of them, seek guidance on difficult issues. Those times made, meant a great deal to me, made this job much easier. It wouldn't have been much worse without having Mike here. I greatly appreciate his willingness to be available for advice and guidance, and wish you the very best in your retirement.
Thanks, John. Appreciate it.
So the, some of the few of the last speakers are going to be about, you know, maybe, I don't know if it's the hallmark of your career here in Groton, Mike, but the 2020. And so I'm going to ask Rick Norris to begin that conversation.
Hi, Mike. I know you've been through many probably hail and farewells. This is certainly a farewell for you, and we hate to see you go. But it is a hail for Susan Austin, who's going to take the reins, as, as you leave him for her to take. I, I had a present for you, but I couldn't find a frame big enough, nor could I fit in my car, the construction sign from the site. So I figured it would go in the garage with the rest of your keepsakes that you look at like every five years or so, when you decide to, to clean out the garage. But those are the best of times.
Yeah.
After you and, and our congressional delegation waded through all the heavy lifting with the political, political stuff on the, on the schools, you left it to the town to build them. I appreciate your respect and support for that. You trusted me to do what was best for the schools, based on the plan that was developed by the Board of Ed, plus do the best for the students. I was always, I was always happy to hear you when you called me back, because you always said, you're the only person I know that answers their own phone. And that, and that was on numerous occasions. So I hope that the, the relationship we developed between the Board of Ed and the Department of Public Works and the town will go forward from here and continue, because I think that was greatly improved from, from previous times. And we really appreciate that, you for that. There's only really two words I have to say. Thank you, Mike. Oh, that's three, but thank you.
Thanks so much, Rick. I appreciate it.
So John Heller, I think I saw you at some point.
Yep. Thanks, thanks so much, Chairman. So as, as Senator Summers, she really took most of my, most of my comments there. But, but I met Lieutenant Grineer in the, in the fall of 1985.
Both of us are going to start crying now.
Yeah, no, I know. Well, I was fine until I saw you, until Elizabeth Porter got me verklempt an hour ago. But, but you, you know, and I was exposed to him as an educator in a very different role than, as he stepped into this budding electrical engineer and, and tried to get him to write and read and, and move forward as a freshman in my journey in the Coast Guard. And, and then as a reservist, he transferred, as I did, to the Coast Guard Cutter Campbell, where we both served together there. And then when I returned here to be an educator at, at that same academy, we were running down River Road, and there he was pushing a stroller with his, with his grandson and daughter, and, and we reunited for the better. Mayor Summers is, I couldn't say it any better than she did, that Norm's Diner was such a prescient moment, followed by coffee with, with Beth Horler at Dunkin' Donuts there, where, where we sort of sealed a little bit of a deal to, to make something happen here. But my connection with, with Dr. Grineer was to convince him to, to leave Ledger. And that was, that included a sailing trip. We went, we went sailing with him to try to convince him. We did a mock interview. I was the chair of his mock interview committee.
Oh, I remember that.
And, and then calming his nerves of, with cocktails in my living room the night before his, his final interview there with the, with the hiring committee. And, and I remember the line, I'm so glad so many of you echoed, was, I really thought we needed him to come and lead us through the desert. We'd been spending, we didn't want to spend 40 years wandering through that desert. And so we really were trying to get him inspired to come and do that. And it has been seven years. It's been six acting interim or real superintendents. We, we have our five towns of Groton. There are four, we've served under four town mayors, three new schools, two turtle doves in, in, in Deb and Leah, they're his turtle doves. And he has been our partridge in a pear tree. I've, I've heard that there's a debunking that, that the partridge in the pear tree is not a reference to Jesus, or that, but I'd like to rebunk that. I saw another definition on there. Whether it's true or not, the poetry works in that partridges will sacrifice themselves to save their children. And I think that's exactly what this man did. As Mr. Dillon once said, the poet laureate, come in, he said, I'll give you shelter from the storm. And, and he built with those three new schools, he did exactly that. He said to our town, come in, and I'll build you shelter from your storm. Thank you, Dr. Grineer. Good luck in your retirement.
John, you, you must have had an outstanding English teacher. That was so articulate. Thank you. I appreciate it.
John, you clearly haven't heard Twisted Sisters, The Twelve Days of Christmas. I just heard it for the very first time today. You should, you should.
I'll listen. I'll listen to it.
Yeah, it's pretty fun. Craig.
Hey, Mike. So I, I get to go last, but I don't know what more I can say. But first, let me just congratulate you on your retirement. It's well deserved, and I wish you well. I don't know if you remember, but I met you about, I think it was about 13 years ago at Fiona's birthday party at the, the Nature Center. You and Deb brought your guitar and were trying to entertain the kids. But I don't know if you remember, you were upstaged by a pooping turtle. But you kept your wits about you, and so, and you were always calm with things like that going on. Evidently, you never learned the adage that you should never entertain after following animals or kids. But anyway, but I really got to know you when we started working together on the task force for the schools, and then subsequently the 2020 PAC. And I found your leadership on both organizations to just be excellent. I mean, the task force was years of meetings. We had to deal with so many different school options, looking at different configurations, vetting all of the locations. On top of that, dealing with the issues of racial imbalance, learning the ins and outs of Connecticut school bonding, and then of course, the merit property swap with the DEP. The task force needed a solid leader to get us through all that, to keep us focused and on point. And you did a great job in doing this. And so when the task force was done, and we turned our attention to the PAC, and selling our vision, your vision, to the community, you know, you were instrumental in explaining the vision to the public at our public forums. You know, I'm convinced without your presentations, we never would have had the largest referendum in Connecticut passed on the, the first vote. Now, I know you weren't entirely pleased with all of the election results that night, but at least we did get the school money passed. And then I have to tell you, you, you really helped me out when we ran into the whole merit property exchange debacle at the 11th hour. And I thought, I thought the project was going to be, was going to be done.
Yep.
But, and I really needed to have your common disposition at that first public meeting with the Gosa people. Because without it, I would have blown a gasket. I mean, you helped me out tremendously there. But we overcame that obstacle, and the 2020 vision is becoming a reality. And it's becoming a reality because of your leadership and determination to see us through the whole process. And I'm sure you're as happy as I am when you drive up Fort Hill and you see that school. It's just awesome. Sorry. And in addition to, you know, being a great leader, though, you always showed genuine interest and compassion in your students. You know, at every meeting, you would always ask me, like, about the IB program, about, you know, how are Ryan and Finn doing? You know, and you continue to do that. I know you did that with any other parents as well. And you know, this, the, the town is going to miss your leadership and your compassion for the, for the kids. And so in closing, look, best of luck to you. Just know you're leaving, this position you're leaving, you did a job well done. Congratulations.
Thanks so much. Great. And sorry about the Army game.
You know what, what I think is very fun, is that we're hearing, Mike, about you. We're hearing about you, Mike, and we're talking about how you were steady, you were focused, you were driven. And then members of your families are coming in and out and moving, and sage is being flipped, or was being flipped for a while as the presentations were going. And I, and I just think it's the whole, you are that whole thing. You are that steady, focused, and that, and anything is going to fly. And so I just really love that part about you. Dr. Grineer, we're, we are going to, and Susan, I, my understanding is that, are there people who've been identified, or for people with more than words, are they, are they, can they just unmike themselves and, and say a couple of words if they would like? So I apologize for those people who are being represented. like? So I apologize for those people who are being represented by more than words. I don't know all of your names, um, but feel free to just kind of um, uh, to jump in.
So, um, I'll go. So I'm Da'aris. So, um, it's been amazing just to hear everything, bragging about you, Mike. You are truly incredible and uh, we've been so um inspired and we're different because of you. You've been that impactful. You've made a difference in everybody that knows you. And um, in all my time in New London and my involvement with More Than Words, um, I have seen your heart for the kids. I've seen your heart um for what's right, you know, and um, is really, you've pushed everybody to know that they can make a difference no matter where they are. And um, and I'm so grateful that you were able to instill that and um, and help us all um just really continue to work with them. And I feel more than just being colleagues and facilitators and we've always like, oh yeah, Mike has a plan, you know, we'll run with it, you know, and um, but we've been able to build such a great friendship too. It's been such a strong sense of family and I, I truly appreciate that. I love you and congratulations.
Thanks so much. I, I, I love you and I appreciate and we'll be together again.
Oh, yes. Looking forward to it.
Are there any, are there any More Than Words students on the call at all?
I think there are.
I would, I would love to say a few words, if I could.
Go for it.
Um, so I joined More Than Words um during my sophomore year after hearing my pupsie talk about the amazing diversity uh club that he uh was a part of. Um, and it truly opened my eyes up to the opportunities that I have each day um at Fitch High School to create a better community and to help those around me um and include everyone. And I'm really appreciative for everything that uh Dr. Grenier has done to uh help the schools. So, thank you.
And I want to thank you for the advice on snow days.
All right, Fiona.
From my grandchildren on, on snow days, I can assure you.
I, I think we might have a few more, More Than Words kids on the call. So anyone else want to speak up?
I just wanna say like good luck and thank you for being like so important to More Than Words, cause like it's a really cool club and all that. And like, thanks.
You're welcome. Thank you so much, Elena.
Um, I'd like to say really quickly, um, I was in More Than Words for four years and I was also lucky enough to be able to be on the Board of Education as a student representative. So I can say with utmost confidence that um Dr. Grenier put his all into everything. He really, he really went to all of the big More Than Words meetings that we had and was always involved in all of our decisions and made sure that equity and justice was so important in our school. And it was, it's inspiring and I really, it really makes um, it makes me feel very lucky that I was able to uh be in Groton Public Schools while Dr. Grenier was superintendent.
Thanks, Abby. Anyone else?
As someone who was like very, very not confident my first joint in freshman year, it was just really nice to have like a, a familiar kind of comforting face there at the big meetings. I was glad to see you.
Thank you. Thank you. I think that's, is that, oh, I think that's all the More Than Words kids on the call. Are there any others?
Kurt, thank you for rounding that up. I appreciate that.
Yeah, there were quite a few of them that wanted um to join in and um, they just couldn't.
Yeah, and I have a, I have a, a message from one that I would like to read right now. My name's Kurt Yonkey. I'm the More Than Words advisor from Ledger High School. I've been working with Mike since he was hired there at the school in two thousand and three. And I'm just passing this message on. Um, "Dear Dr. Grenier, thank you for your dedication towards uplifting and creative, creating a supportive, safe space for young people of color during your time served in the education system. More Than Words opened the door for me to feel empowered while talking about my experiences. For once in my life, I truly felt heard, validated, and seen and supported in a white-dominated space. I sailed across the, the ocean to Cuba on a ship where I learned that smoo- a smooth sea never made a skilled sailor. I made lifelong friends and I'm now, that I now consider family. Thank you for changing my life in a way that I will never forget and will always be grateful for. I miss you. Lauren Hippowitz, Ledger High School, class of twenty seventeen." I also just would like to say that I know, like you say, like I said, I worked with Mike for many, many years. And the thing that I liked most about working with him is he's a problem solver. You know, we get, sit down at the table, we look at the problems and we get right to work, try to get the problem solved. It's been a pleasure, Mike. I love you. I look forward to hanging out with you more in the future. Take care.
You, you got it, Kurt. Thank you so much.
Well, Mike, we, we have a little wrap up for you. Um, our Mark, Mark Russell has put together a little bit of a slideshow. It's about probably ten minutes. And I thought this was a good segue. Um, you know, we love you. You've just done an enormous job. You've readied me to continue the journey, but we know where you live and we know where to find you. And you're still much part of this community and, you know, will be always part of this community. So with that note, Mark, if you wanna um, you know, it, let us enjoy your slideshow.
(Music) Long ago and oh so far away, I fell in love with you before the second show. Your guitar, it sounds so sweet and clear, but you're not really here. It's just the radio. Don't you remember you told me you loved me, baby? You said you'd be coming back this way again, baby. Baby, 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 oh, baby, I love you. If I could save time in a bottle, the first thing that I'd like to do is to save every day till eternity passes away, just to spend them with you. If I could make days last forever, if words could make wishes come true, I'd save every day like a treasure and then again, I would spend them with you. But there never seems to be enough time to do the things you wanna do once you find them. I've looked around enough to know that you're the one I wanna go through time with. You used to be the best to make life relive to me. And I hope that you're still out there and you're like you used to be. So how about some good time and we'll dance the morning sun. And we'll let the good times come in and we won't stop till we're done. We'll be back in the high life again. All the doors I closed one time will open up again. We'll be back in the high life again. All the eyes that once just once would smile and take us in. And we'll drink and dance with one hand free and have the world so easily. Though we'll be a sight to see. Back in the high life again. You've been so kind and generous. I don't know how you keep on giving. For your kindness, I'd make death to you. And I never could have gone this far without you. For everything you've done, you know I'm bound, I'm bound to thank you for it. La, 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 la. Oh, I want you back in love so many gifts you gave with love and tenderness I want back in. If I should call you up, invest a dime, and you say you belong to me, it leaves my mind. Imagine how the world could be, so very fine, so happy together. I can't see me loving nobody but you for all my life. When you're with me, baby, the skies will be blue for all my life. Me and you, you and me, no matter how they toss the dice, it had to be. The only one for me is you and you for me, so happy together. I can't see me loving nobody but you for all my life. These are days you remember. Never before and never since, I promise. Will the whole world be all my place? And as you feel it, you'll know it's true that you are blessed and lucky. It's true that you are touched by something that I'm growing in you. These are days that you remember. When Miss Rashid knew I knew only desire to be part of the miracles you see. In every eye, I know it's true that you are blessed and lucky. It's true that you are touched by something that I'm growing in you. I feel the earth move under my feet. I feel the sky tumbling down. I feel my heart start to trembling whenever you're around. Oh, baby, when I see your face mellow as the month of May. Oh, darling, I can't stand it when you look at me that way. Hey, I feel the earth move under my feet. I feel the sky tumbling down. I feel my heart start to trembling whenever you're around. Comes a time when you're drifting. Comes a time when you settle down. Comes a light, feelings lifting. Lift that baby right up off the ground. Oh, this old world keeps spinning round. It's the wonder tall trees ain't laying down. There comes a time. You and I, we were captured. We took our souls and we flew away. We were right. We were giving. That's how we kept what we gave away. Oh, this old world keeps spinning round. It's the wonder tall trees ain't laying down. There comes a time. Comes a time. Comes a time. Loving you isn't the right thing to do. How can I ever change things that I feel? If I could, baby, I'd give you my world. How can I when you won't take it from me? You can go your own way. You can call it another, no way.
Mark, that was fabulous.
Unbelievable.
Well done.
Awesome job, Mark. Wow. Just wow.
It's gonna take me a while to process all this.
Well, it's been recorded so you can continue to watch it.
Thank you very much. Th- this was a little overwhelming.
I bet. And so, Dr. Grenier, um, I'm, I'm gonna come clean now that I'm sorry that I lied to you about um, but I think that um, I will beg forgiveness now. Um, but.
Well, and Kim, John, well done. Three meetings at the normal time that we do one. So there you go.
That's true.
All right. And Mike, we've talked a lot about Groton twenty twenty, but one of the things that um really was the, the catalyst for change was having that International Baccalaureate campus sitting on the hill and the growth of our IB program with not only the diploma program, the careers program, and the NYPD program and the, you know, eight million dollars worth of grants that we sought um and to afford what has happened not only um but for the inside programming. And that really is also one of your crowns. So I just appreciate having you as my mentor and my captain. And um, you know, it's been a wonderful journey. So those are my words.
And I guess I'll see you, you and Deb around the neighborhood, Mike. Always walking by at some point or other. You, you bet. We'll be watching Jamie jogging and we'll uh, her hunt. I think everyone can see now why I feel so proud and why I feel so humble with these incredible partners that I've.